Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. Who am I missing? Oh, our city attorney. No, I saw her. So I know she's coming. So we're gonna go ahead and get started because commissioners, we have a full day in front of us. So we'll start. We don't have anything before we get to our agenda items. So we'll get started with the first one. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of tax foreclosed properties to various nonprofit housing organizations for an estimated cost of $204,113.
So moved.
All right. Jono, you want to tell us about this? I know all of us are quite familiar with it. We've talked about it at length at ED Economic Development Project Team, and we had a public hearing.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. So just a brief recap again. On June 12, you authorized acquiring 23 tax foreclosed properties from Kent County. On July 10, those were approved to be transferred to the Land Bank Authority to provide certain services. Community development and economic development collaborated on the development of an RFP. This morning at fiscal, there was a recommendation for four awards related to the set aside home funds. And then this agenda item authorizes the transfer of the tax foreclosed properties to the various nonprofits, all with the goal of creating affordable housing. Eighty percent AMI homeownership and 60% AMI for rental, with a few exceptions here, as noted on the table in your agenda item. So 719 Prospect is adjacent to ICCF's Family Haven, and the intent there is to expand the services at Family Haven. And then, as has been discussed previously, where affordable housing at 80% AMI is not feasible, and homes will be renovated, and any excess revenues will be returned to the city to make additional investments in affordable housing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions about this? Commissioner?
Yes. Jono, thank you for this work. I know that this is a lot, and it's now we're back to where we were before. The Land Bank took a lot of these properties, but they're still going to do the title work. The Property Management Fund, is that something that's a new? We've had this all along, right?
That's correct.
We used to have a position, I remember years ago, to handle that, right? A certain person that was in that position.
Yeah. I mean, yes, going way back in history, the city was the foreclosing entity, and so we had a, my understanding, this is before my time, but there was a position that handled that process, yeah.
Right, right. And then, the purchase agreements, that's a new?
So the purchase agreements give the developers the certainty that they'll be able to acquire the property in order to line up their financing and move forward with development agreements where home funds are involved.
Right. So thank you for that, because that's something we've heard quite often, that that was holding them up and providing, this will provide some of the certainty. So thank you for doing that. I really appreciate that.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to our second resolution. That's a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment in the amount of $225,740 for the 16 tax foreclosed properties to contribute to affordable housing outcomes in the city of Grand Rapids. Can I get a motion?
Some support.
All right. And Commissioners, this is companion with the item number one. Jono, anything to add with this?
Nope. Just that this is final approval of the brownfield plan amendment, which allows the brownfield authority to make small investments in these properties to facilitate lead remediation for most of them and demolition at a couple of them as well.
Great. All right. Commissioners, any questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution to consider zoning ordinance tax amendments relative to medical marijuana and setting the date for adoption of those amendments, which include allowing for secure transporters, safety compliance facilities as permitted use in certain zone districts, modifying the administration, timing and mapping of required separation distances, modifying separation distance requirements for provisioning centers located in industrial zones, and other amendments meant to clarify and correct previously adopted language. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right. So Suzanne, we all got a lengthy packet. That was part of our agenda, including all of the notes from the planning commission. So Commissioners, hopefully you all had a chance to get through that. You want to walk us through what's before us today?
Yeah. So we have discussed this quite a bit. I should say good morning to all of you first. And the mayor kind of said a mouthful when she read off the purpose for the agenda. Really, the proposed amendments, we have talked about this extensively in a number of meetings, most notably in your October 9 work session. And based on all the feedback that you gave us, we modified the ordinance. We went back to the planning commission with those amendments as required by state law. The planning commission held a public hearing on it. They received several public comments. Most of those were related to looking at the definition of school and whether or not there should be a primary and ancillary expression related to play fields. They received public comment about Hausman Field specifically with a business owner who is interested in being located closer than 1,000 feet. And so they were debating whether or not that met the definition of school for Hausman Field. Looking at minor changes about outdoor storage of vehicles for transporters, and looking at window transparency, LARA requires that the marijuana product itself be concealed, but we're requiring windows for public safety reasons. So kind of some massaging of that was based off of it. The planning commission also had an extensive discussion, and you could see that in your minutes regarding whether or not prequalification should be required. And they heard testimony on both sides. There was a lot of debate about the numbers that are there, and I'm sure that you've heard since from stakeholders. The planning commission opted, although they were on the fence, they opted to recommend that prequalification stay in the ordinance. So that is included in your recommendations as well as other kind of other considerations that they had in the amendments that were made to the zoning ordinance. So probably the biggest change, based on discussions with city commissioners, as well as the planning commission recommendation, that deviates from your October 9th discussion is whether or not prequalification would stay in the zoning ordinance, or whether we would just make a prequalification application a precursor to the application to the planning commission. And so that's probably your biggest point of discussion this morning, would be my assumption. But all other provisions basically are as you discussed at your work session. I don't know, Kristin, where you was here, if you have any other things that you want to highlight for them as far as the amendments go, or any other suggested changes that we had.
Okay. Good. Suzanne, I just have one question specifically to Hausman Field. Hausman Field is in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and there's a requirement for distance from residential. So help me understand why that's an issue with Hausman Field if clearly all around it is residential, and there's distance requirements to residential.
Yeah. I'll let Landon answer that.
So Hausman Field is residentially zoned.
Yeah.
And there is residential around it, but the residential setback requirement is along the primary street frontage. So all the properties along Michigan that would otherwise be cut out because of residential zoning, the residential zoning is behind them and not along the same street frontage of Michigan Street.
I see.
So Hausman Field wouldn't apply in that case because of residential zoning. But as a school, it would have a 1,000-foot setback, is the question.
Which is not linear. Okay. I see. All right. Thank you. Yeah.
But I have a question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would Hausman Field being used by the public school system, that would not apply?
Well, that was the question, is whether or not we could consider Hausman Field a school per the definition, or if we looked at it as a playground. I mean, they do have a playground there.
They play.
They do. They play.
They play on that ground.
They have. Yes, they do. So we could look at it that way. I think we were trying to figure out if there was a way from a definitional standpoint to address it. The applicant was trying to argue that they are, a property owner was suggesting that it isn't a school, and that it isn't affected under these provisions. And so staff had suggested in the text amendments to the planning commission, something that would clarify that a little bit more, because our concern was that Hausman Field has a lot of young people that come to it. And, you know, and there's been issues, for example, with the party store at the corner in the past. And so we were just worried about kind of activity and use. And so we were trying to provide clarity. The property owner on Michigan Street was hoping to be able to allow, to be able to use their property and apply for marijuana facility.
Okay.
Yeah. Because my biggest concern was that that playground is in use. You can ride by there on any particular occasion when school is out. That neighborhood is using that playground.
Yep.
And my concern also is that when those football, during football season, track season, it's in use, and there are children on those fields. I want to be very careful that we don't isolate a particular piece of property because somebody want to have a marijuana license or want to be able to sell marijuana.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. So Commissioners, we've all had a chance to, so Suzanne, just clarify for us then. The recommendation, like, let's say specifically related to the Hausman Field issue, under the language that is in the draft ordinance that's before us today, that would be considered a part of the school, and there would be a distance requirement? Yes. I just want to make sure that we're all very clear.
I'll go over to the attorney.
So before you today is an introduction of general tax amendments. It does not apply to a specific piece of property.
I get that.
So I'm a little bit weary of saying yes or no on something that isn't law yet, particularly where that application of facts to law would be within the purview of first a director review, which would then go to the BCA. So let me put it in context. The reason why we were asked to review this was the Hausman Field, but the text of what a school means would apply to everybody.
Okay.
And a school would include, a school would, under that definition, which we pulled from state law, would include any playing field that is regularly or habitually used by the school.
Thank you. City Mayor?
That's what I was gonna confirm. On page 28 of your package, that language clearly says that for the purposes of a school, the playing field would be included.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I'm just gonna turn to you and ask. All right. So Commissioners, any additional conversation about what's before us today? I feel like we have spent a lot of time on this. Any questions? Comments? All right. I'm gonna call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving a city commission policy for waivers to the separation distance requirement for parks for medical marijuana facilities. And I'll turn, I gotta, so moved, do you have a second?
Port.
All right. Suzanne, you want to tell us about this? We also had quite a bit of conversation about this around this table.
Yes, you did. So the, so the VITA, the Voluntary Equitable Development Agreement is voluntary. I'll emphasize that. And there was a lot of discussion around the table about focusing on local, particularly...
Oh, Suzanne, where are the parks one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I skipped packages. It's been a crazy morning. So the parks waivers, what we tried to do with the parks waivers is look at some standards that we thought in the policy would be able to really reflect a set of, kind of a comprehensive list of things for the commission to consider as you worked through and you had these public hearings. You may recall that the parks commission decided that they did not want to hear the request for park waivers, and so it will come to the city commission as a public hearing, which is what the neighborhood association's requested. And then we provided criteria similar to the standards that we use during land use approvals to be able to kind of guide decision making. And so all this park waiver policy is, is provides that criteria for you as you have those hearings and you're making decision on whether or not to grant a waiver.
Great. All right. Commissioners, any questions about this?
So I would assume that you would do a review of it ahead of time. You gave us the package of the different parks and let us know what the type?
Yes. So we, yeah, so we showed you before what you would get, is that we provided some radii that showed 250, 500, 750, and 1,000. We could also calibrate that based on the request, which we don't know. So we kind of did that speculatively, just to get a sense of what that might look like based on part of the presumption, based on the commission's discussions in the past about alcohol being 500 feet. So we wanted to kind of test that. What we'll be providing you, there's 19 parks that are possible locations where you might get waiver requests. And of those, we will be providing you with information about the type of park facility that's there, the size, and have the neighborhood that's surrounding it.
But I think it's gonna be important for us to get a sense of what 500 feet is versus 1,000, because 500 is probably less than a block away, whereas 1,000 is a couple blocks.
And I think the big thing here, and a lot of our parks are in unique locations for reasons of topography or other considerations. And so where you might have a waiver request, it may be nothing, because you might be separated by the freeway or other things. So the standards that we're providing do allow for that flexibility to say, yeah, well, in this certain circumstance, because, you know, you're 100 feet away from, you know, this big huge hill, and it's separated from this neighborhood on this side, then that might be completely appropriate to think about that. So this gives you that flexibility.
Great. Thanks, Suzanne. So Commissioners, I'll just share with you, and I think I said this last time, I have mixed feelings about this whole waiver process, particularly for parks, but I'm willing to give it a try, knowing that there's support around this table for that. But I would hope that six months from now, or a year from now, if we find it's problematic or there are issues, or we're denying all of them, that we are willing to revisit this policy. So again, I see this, the work that we're doing is fluid, and we're gonna learn as we go. And we may very well need to make changes, additional changes, even in the ordinance, six months, nine months, 12 months from now. And I just want to put that out there, that I hope we all recognize that we need to learn as we go, and if problems come up, we need to be able to bring that back up before this body and address those. All right. Any other questions or comments about this? All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Now Suzanne, it will take us to the resolution approving a city commission policy on marijuana industry Voluntary Equitable Development Agreements, which we're referring to as MYVITA.
Support.
All right. I have a moved in support.
So as I was saying, the MYVITA supports local participation wherever possible, with an emphasis on local ownership and hiring. And so this allows us to really set the order for applications for planning commission. It's not mandatory. It's completely up to an applicant, but what it does help us do is prioritize those applications that are based on the city commission's goals and priorities for our community. And so what will happen with this is those applicants that desire to voluntarily offer doing a VITA, then we will put them into different buckets, for lack of a better word, where we will do a draw from that, and they will have kind of the first, they'll be first in line for the planning commission hearings for special land use. This does not guarantee a planning commission approval, but it does help set the order for those hearings. So in the VITA, we listened to the city commission. We had a lot of discussion at your meetings in November, and looked through this and decided to really shorten and streamline this application. So you will see really three categories. One for local residency, for state of Michigan, Kent County, city of Grand Rapids, and those within the city of Grand Rapids general target area. The second category is local economy. Commitment to hire 15% of employees who, or more, who are city of Grand Rapids residents working more than 30 hours per week. The city commission was concerned, and we had a debate about, is it one hour, or what's that number, to be able to establish full employment? And so 30 hours is included. Commitment to micro LBE participation, we've had 24%, and that seems like a strange number, but based on diversity and inclusion's analysis of micro LBE participation in the city of Grand Rapids activities, they found that 24% is the sweet spot. So that's included. And then number three is whether or not separation distances, the waivers are required for those. And so this would also allow for a point for that. Each one of these is worth a point. So the more local you get, the higher the points in the priority. One of the questions that you might have is why is, under streamlined applications, the prequal not included in here, because the prequal was included in the ordinance, and so that changed things. We are not, however, requiring prequal for secure transporters and testing facilities. So just wanted to emphasize that. For example, you heard from Dad's Magic Bus during testimony, and said, I want to be able to participate. And most of the people that we heard from who'd like to participate locally were more interested in transporters. And so that does eliminate that barrier for them.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So thank you for that. I'm gonna open it up for questions and discussion. I think this captures our desire to really support this local preference and supporting our local economy, and I appreciate all the work that went into capturing that desire. All right. So I'll open it up. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Suzanne, for giving the explanation of all this. As I look at the qualifications for the VITA, one thing that strikes me as important is this focus on local economy. And while I struggle with the idea that we're gonna apply this VITA to one particular industry, I do, I would like to propose an amendment to the local economy section to add one additional point in, which is a commitment to hiring at minimum 30 employees working 30 or more hours a week. And so the idea that, being that, creating jobs has always been something we've been, we've celebrated in Grand Rapids, and we, you know, we use that metric in a lot of different factors as we look at application for tax credits or for local supportive projects. And, you know, I do think in some of the operations, especially in the kind of growing side, that there's real opportunity to create good paying jobs in Grand Rapids in underutilized and underdeveloped and former industrial spaces that could have higher and better uses. And so someone making that financial commitment to hiring that many people, I think, could have, you know, should allow them the opportunity to get a point in the scoring of how to get to, you know, order in the planning commission, so.
All right. So there's an amendment before us to add that language about number of employees, which would really be tied to, like, I'm looking at 2A, and if you have four employees with a commitment of 15% from Grand Rapids, that technically is one out of the four, but if you get to a higher threshold, clearly that has a greater impact if those two are coupled together, over 30 plus a commitment of 15%.
And this would not preclude anyone local from accessing this point. So it's just an additional layer of opportunity for that ultimate, which is, you know, creating jobs and opportunities for people in Grand Rapids.
No, I hear you. So do I, there's an amendment before us. Do I have a support for that?
Support.
Okay. So the amendments before us, Commissioners, any specific feedback about that amendment or concern about adding in that bullet point under local economy, which would take the total number of points up to eight possible, which again is much more streamlined than we originally proposed? Commissioner? Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, can you restate what you would like?
Yeah. The move would be to add a third bullet point under C, under local economy, and that bullet point would read, commitment to hiring at minimum 30 employees working more than 30 hours per week.
All right. And I, and who seconded that? Commissioner Moody seconded that. So that's what's on the floor?
For clarification, employees within the city of Grand Rapids or just the number of employees?
Number of employees, because you would be, assumed then you go after bullet point A for the local point, yes.
So it's really trying to incent those, those companies that are gonna commit to hiring more people that then hopefully would have a commitment to hiring local?
Thank you.
All right. So questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a question about, because I think, I like this idea. But growers, processors, dispensaries are all different, so this would apply?
To any of them?
Of them, but, but in terms of getting points, like, for a dispensary, for example, I mean, they couldn't meet that threshold.
Potentially. I mean, some of them could be the stacked licenses as well.
It could be. I recognize that. So that it could be all in one. But there's, it also might not be. So I don't know if we have a way to address that so that we aren't somehow penalizing those who are going to have a much smaller business. But I like, I like this goal.
And I, and I think I understand your concern, but I also think it's about the competitiveness between, so if you're gonna be a grower, and someone else is gonna be a grower and applying, you're really competing with other growers because of the zones that they're in.
Right, right.
Where if you're a dispensary, there's, you know, unless, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of dispensaries that hire 30 people. Maybe there are, maybe I'm...
No, they're right.
So you're, the point really becomes a moot point at that point, that if no dispensary can access the 30 people, then no one gets preference on that. But for those industries where they can compete with each other, then it does become a qualifying factor.
And I think that'll probably be true also for the MLB E. I think it's probably easier for a larger company to make a commitment, probably using more contractors and subcontractors. So I think some of that is just the size and scope of what the development is.
Well, I understand all that. It's just about, you know, everybody's talking about getting in line here and getting their approvals, so.
No, I agree, Commissioner. That's a very good point. So we're trying to incent our priorities about supporting local. Yeah. Commissioner Landon?
Yeah. So I have a quick question. If, if we aren't narrowing down the location, in this case, the city of Grand Rapids, then wouldn't they just, wouldn't they just, why would we, why would we give them a point for doing what they would have to do regardless to run their business? So that's one question, because I thought, you know, I thought if we were talking specifically about hiring in the city, then that, that's a different conversation. But if they're gonna hire, if they have to hire 30 people to run their business, they're gonna do that regardless, and I don't know why we should consider giving them a point for that. And then the second question is, is there any consideration to adding livable wage as a factor in that? And, you know, I'm looking at our attorneys to weigh in on that, but I just think, you know, again, if we're gonna have it there, it has to mean something, and I think if you're already to run your business, planning to hire so many people, I don't know why it would make a difference.
Well, I think to the first part of your...
Well, I'm gonna allow Commissioner O'Connor, and I just want to make sure that if we have a legal question, that we give an opportunity to respond, because there are state laws around mandating certain wages. So there's preemption laws already in place, whether it's ban the box, healthcare, wage, so there's limitations on that. But I'll...
I won't speak to the, I won't speak to the...
That's why I asked the lawyers for the legal question. You responded that. You would respond to the other piece.
So I think the reason that...
I'll let Commissioner O'Connor respond to that.
That I, I'm supportive of this endeavor is, again, we've, we've created a scenario with our land use pattern, our land use regulation, that creates a very limited number of properties that are available to do these types of endeavors. And so, understanding there's only so many available, the idea of creating jobs in Grand Rapids is first and foremost, on my mind, is in creating those opportunities. And so to create a structure in which people are going to be lining up to get, to try to access one of these licenses, I want to make sure that the job creators, like, to the mayor's point of, if a dispenser or a provisioning center only hires four people, it's a very, it's, it's an impact, but it's not that big impact. And typically in Grand Rapids, we have always, you know, if this was not a medical marijuana discussion, and this was around any other industry, and someone was offering the opportunity to create 30 jobs in Grand Rapids, we would celebrate that opportunity and find ways to help them make their way into our community. And so I want to make sure that the, these real economic development, where they're gonna take, you know, a 30-job creation in a industrial space that's probably underutilized or is not operating at its highest and best use, has the chance, so that if someone comes in and opens a small grow operation in that same industrial zone that only employs four people, I would, I really want the 30 jobs, because 30 jobs matters to me. So four jobs matters, but 30 jobs really matters to this community in terms of really creating economic opportunities for people.
So your goal then is to try and incentivize larger facilities?
My goal is to not penal, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm trying, I'm not, I want everyone to be, have equal opportunity. I'm just saying, I want, I think, I think those, I don't want to penalize people that are gonna be creating something, which we would normally incent, in a sense, we're kind of punishing by making them go through this voluntary process.
So any opposition to having the employees be Grand Rapids residents like the other, like A?
I think that creates the two-tiered point system, right? Like, you can, you get one point for employing 30 more, 30 people. can, you get one point for employing thirty more, thirty people. If you'd like a second point, make the next commitment and you actually get, it's, it's a way to get more points, actually, by making two commitments to Grand Rapids.
Okay.
Okay, so real quick, I, I just want to confirm my statement is accurate about state law and that we can't build in requirements to wages. So I'll turn to our city attorney for that. And then I'm gonna give a sense where the rest of the commission is on this amendment and call the question and move forward.
Okay, so you're absolutely correct, Mayor. We cannot get into anything that's around wages, that's state law. We have no jurisdiction to do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so commissioners, any other questions about this amendment? And then I'd, I'd like to get a sense of where the commission is on this. If there's, if there's four votes in support of it, then I'll move forward and bring back the entire item back up. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in?
I have a question.
Okay.
And I'd like to hear from Landon about this proposal, the pros and the cons, and any, you know, especially around, say, a very small business being able to get into the ownership around this because of getting in line, because these are points. So is that going to further?
It would be part of the Vida, which would tee up your, as you said, tiers of applications that are considered first. So, Landon, any additional thoughts on this?
As far as the proposed amendment?
Yes.
I think the commissioner's point, it makes a, sort of adds a dimension to larger companies that may not otherwise have access to other points.
I guess I'm thinking larger versus small, and, and any disadvantage to the small?
I think so. I mean, a minimum number of employees, a thirty-employee company, or thirty hired employees is gonna be a certain size of company to start with, and this is the first round only.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, I mean, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that's the nature of the, this industry, that we're gonna have small companies and large companies, and we're gonna have some that want grow facilities and stacked. We're gonna have some that just wanna do the, the dispensary versus the, I, I think that's just the nature of it.
All right, and it's, and it's hard to determine now who can even come up with the money even for a small, I mean, I think there's a lot of, a sense out there that might be inaccurate about how easy it is to get into this business in terms of all the fines, you know, I don't know about the fines, all the permit costs and so on.
That's correct. And just to illustrate that point, the Phase Two application to LARA is forty-four thousand dollars a year. That's the license fee for this year. Next year is projected to be sixty-six thousand dollars. So, the threshold's very difficult.
But remember, we have nothing to do with that. That is all state law, that is all through LARA, that, that, we, we, we as a, as a local body, we cannot impact those regulations at the state level and the requirements that the state is putting on applicants. And of course, we have concerns about that and making sure people locally have access, but we're not, that's not within our purview and authority to impact, unfortunately.
Important point, yes.
Yeah, so I just, I want to try to keep us focused on, on the issue at hand. Again, this is the My Vida, which is voluntary agreement, where we're trying to figure out the tiered approach to identifying applications to be considered, to tee them up for getting them on the agenda of the Planning Commission. And our focus is local economy, local growth, supporting local. And, and I do think, from what was originally proposed with My Vida, this really captures that intent and desire of the commission. So, okay, so I'm gonna call the question on the amended My Vida, right? So, just looking at my two experts here, making sure I'm following the Robert's rules. So commissioners, all those in favor of the amended My Vida language, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right.
Mayor?
Yeah, city manager?
Point of privilege. Let me thank Suzanne, Landon, and Kristen for all of their work bringing us these three policy issues today. I do want to also suggest that as we begin to consider the provisions around regulating, our zoning around medical marijuana and also recreational marijuana usage, I have been guns talking to staff about some of the needs regarding our organization in order to make sure that we're able to not only process applications, but also ensure compliance on both ends. And so although we don't have this as part of the ordinance coming forth, you will be hearing perhaps our needs around our proposed budget around these issues. Also, we'll be working with staff just to clarify on the My Vida in the ordinance, perhaps a minor cleanup, just to clarify, clarify the voluntary nature of, of the ordinance.
So they just confirmed that this morning, that we're, we're good. So double-checked.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll add my thanks. I know a lot of staff have put a lot of time and energy into this, and also all of you around this table. I think we all got a crash course in medical marijuana and land use, and we've learned from other communities. And we have all spent a lot of time listening to a lot of feedback from the community and from outside of our community. And so I just want to thank everyone around this table as well for all the work in getting us to where we are today. So, thanks.
Thank you. And as staff, we, thank you very much. The work session was really beneficial for us and very helpful. And I'll just remind you that we're not done quite yet, that you will have at some point a regulatory ordinance coming before you, and recreational at some point before, you know, we'll, right now, we have a stopgap to allow us a little bit of breathing room, but at some point, you may want to discuss recreational. So, but the regulatory ordinance will be something that we will be recommending that you move forward on.
Thanks Suzanne. And Suzanne, I just want to, I just want to be crystal clear about that as well. I think there's been a little bit of confusion in the community. This, this is specific to medical marijuana. The state has twelve months to figure out rules for recreational, so we're not going to be doing anything around recreational at a minimum, at a minimum, for twelve months. It could be much longer based on what happens at the state. But, you know, this is very specific. Is this a good foundation? Absolutely. But clearly, when we, when the time is right, we'll have that conversation. But as of right now, this is very specific to medical marijuana. Yes, thank you. All right.
Just one request, that some of this information around the timeline be posted, because we are getting all kinds of questions. If there's a page we can refer people to.
Yeah, so after our meeting tonight, if, if we can work on getting that out to the public, Commissioner, that's an excellent, excellent point. So.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Great, thanks. All right, commissioners, next that will take us to our sixth resolution before us. This is a resolution to consider zoning ordinance text amendments to implement the Housing Now recommendations, and this is recommendation three, eight, and nine, and setting the date for adoption of those text amendments. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Support.
All right, so commissioners, this too comes after a lengthy conversation at our last commission meeting, where we provided some direction to the Planning Department on what we would like to see advanced. We've made quite a few changes in some of the areas to provide for additional input. And then it breaks down what needs more work, and there's a process that Suzanne is gonna move forward with that, and then what really needs to be a part of a larger master plan. So Suzanne, you wanna talk with us about this?
Yes, this is another big body of work that we're getting towards the end of. So, you discussed a lot of this on November 27th, and the direction given to staff is that, what we've ended up, out of the four recommendations, there's eight components of the thirteen originally proposed that will be moving forward and are included in this ordinance language, four amendments that would receive additional refinement in January and come back to you in February, perhaps early March, based on the, kind of the churn that we have to go through. And then one that could be potentially delayed to master plan and that, with some nuances there. So, for example, we got into a conversation about non-condo zero lot line, which is recommendation number nine, and a compromise was created where we talked about permitting up to four attached dwellings with administrative approval within five hundred feet of a mixed-use commercial zone district on vacant lots with alley access. So that was a nuance that we added, which is allowing that to move forward. I know Commissioner Ruppert has expressed interest to me, and also seeing it's the same would apply to small-scale development for duplexes and small apartment buildings. But that's a topic for you to discuss today. For all the other amendments, I'll briefly go through the ones that are proposed in the ordinance before you today. For recommendation number three, you both, you, very quickly, in your packet, I broke it out by each recommendation, but there's also a summary sheet on package page ninety-eight, if you just want to look at that one, it kind of summarizes all of it. So, moving forward for small-scale development, which would allow for some of those missing-middle housing types, we're eliminating, eliminating the lot area requirement of twenty thousand square feet in the TN Zone District, reducing minimum dwelling width from eighteen feet to fourteen feet. When we go down then to accessory dwelling units, we're eliminating the lot area requirement of five thousand square feet, increasing the building height for accessory structures within ADU to allow two-story garages, increasing the floor area ratio from twenty-five percent to forty percent between primary structure and accessory dwelling unit. And then when we look to non-condo zero lot line, we're advancing the, the minimum lot width reduction by four feet, the lot width and lot area requirements based on what follows, which is allowing the four detached dwellings with administrative approval within five hundred feet, a mixed-use commercial zone district areas with vacant lots with alley access. So, those are the items that are moving forward and are proposed in your ordinance today. The ones that will be coming back to you have to do with two families on corner lots, and then of the affordable housing density bonus, so that we have time to talk to affordable housing advocates and providers. Looking at ADUs with administrative approval, to Commissioner Lanier's point, she wanted to know how that process would be administered, and the templates and what those would look like. And related to that is the maximum occupancy and number of bedrooms would also be analyzed. The one remaining item that we have listed based on our discussion on the, last week, would be the multifamily with administrative approval within one hundred or five hundred feet of a mixed-use commercial zone district.
Mayor?
All right, good summary. City Manager?
Yes, I also want to, to follow up from our conversation last time, and some of the other things that require more work from the comments that we had in our one-on-one meetings, for example, the two-family dwellings on administrative approval with, on corner lots. We will take the feedback that we received from the commissioners, for instance, in having separate entrance on side streets for those dwellings, and those should be reflected in the notes as well.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioner?
I love that that's still on there for more work, and I would, I would love to see the five, a hundred feet to five hundred feet also moved with more work and with the same pilot as row houses that we would explore when it comes back to us. What would it look like to do that on vacant land? You know, by then we'll have some more conversations to have some design guideline conversations, but then, that way there's no, no displacement, and we can discuss the merits of, of doing that as a pilot until the master plan, in the same way as zero cot, zero lot condo lines. But then, in addition, this was a question I had, is that extra incentive was in there that we talked about last time for affordable housing developers. So, in addition to it being a pilot, there is an additional incentive if somebody is gonna do an affordable project on one of those vacant lots.
So Suzanne, you captured that, and that can be part of the work?
Yes.
For the Needs More Work over the next three months?
Yep, that's in there, because they had, if you look at the sheet, item number three, two-family dwellings, increase bonus percentage reduction for lot area for affordable and accessible units, amend for doorways on each street, and consider parking. Those are the notes I have.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Lanier?
Suzanne, for number, recommendation number eight, and item number four under that recommendation was the permit with administrative approval. And I was asking the question about the postcard notifications. I don't, you were moving too quickly for me, so I wasn't keeping up with the words that you were mentioning as you were kind of giving a recap of all of them. But did you have that included? I know that that's coming back soon. Do you know when that'll come back? And I'm sure you're doing some work on it before it comes back.
Yeah, it'll come, we're gonna be working on it this month and in January, and you'll see it in February. It's under the Needs More Work so that we can clearly lay it out for you. I'm thinking some sort of infographic or something that kind of just shows you how the process would work if we did something like that.
Okay, so then all of the more work will come back in February?
Yeah, we'll be done, the goal is to be done with all of it the first quarter of this next year, so.
Yeah.
Whew. And you can close out the Love and Recommendations of Housing Now. I mean, you've, you've done all of the other ones, which is really amazing and really is notable. And I think we've been so wrapped up in these zoning recommendations, we don't want to lose the fact that you've implemented so much of Housing Now already. And so this is that next step, and we have just a little, you know, it's that last ten percent, so we're, we're almost there.
Which Suzanne, I'm so glad you said that. I, I was talking about housing yesterday, and it would be nice to remind, like, go back to the bigger picture and all the work that we've done and the other recommendations that we've already implemented. And then I know the city manager has already talked about, how do we really make sure that we're capturing good metrics to show impact? And that needs to be for all of the different proposals, whether it's the pilot eviction court, or it's the increase in the low-income down-payment program, or, like, it'd be really nice to capture that and to make sure that we're, we're looking at the outcomes of this work, so that we can be informed on what we need to do differently. Do we need to make amendments to some of those? Is there something that we can scale up that's, that is incredibly effective? So, City Manager, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I think, Mayor, we will be very deliberate on our strategic priorities and make sure that we have an annual report on all of the major issues that the commission is focused on, so we can see the progress that we're making and see whether or not we're moving the needle.
Thank you, thank you. And then, and then the other comment I want to make, and I appreciate Commissioner Lanier bringing this up last week, it'll be really interesting to see what comes back around this kind of pilot of the permit with administrative approval with notification of the neighbors, and then based on feedback from the neighbors, whether it goes forward with administrative approval or moves to special land use. You know, that could be a template for other approvals as well, this kind of two-tiered approach to approvals. And so I'll be interested to see what you come up with, and if potentially that could be something that we utilize with other types of approval processes. I, I, I just think it's a really creative potential solution to some of the problems and concerns we've heard with special land use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested actually, and excited about trying it out, just to see. I'm not aware of other communities that do it quite that way, but we don't usually follow what other communities do. I mean, our administrative approval process that we use, especially the deviations process, has really, I mean, we, we used to have two Board of Zoning Appeal meetings every month with eight, ten items on the agenda. We've gone down to two to four items in a month because of the, the approval process that we allow for some flexibility. But we have guidelines in there and standards, and we document all of it. So, something similar, I think, could be a really interesting space to work in.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. All right, commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you so much for all this work, and I'm glad we talked about the fact that there were eleven recommendations. And those eleven actually were done through a dot exercise, because there are many more we haven't even gotten to. So, and also thank you, Commissioner Lanier, you brought up the, you know, the postcard and so on, because I think that is a concern, and there's a little confusion. I've heard some feedback from our earlier discussions, that, that there still is a process for neighborhood input, that, and it'll be great to collect those metrics on special land use versus administrative approval and begin to move forward. So that, our, our approval process will look more similar to some of those other cities that we look like eventually, once we're done with this and then the master planning. And I think it's a great way for us to speed up the process and yet continue to get good input. So, thanks for the ideas and support.
Well said.
Can I just add, add one more thing? I just want to thank you Suzanne and to everyone on your team. I'm looking at other staff members who, over the last couple years, have contributed to us getting to this point. I am curious if there is a way for us to make sure that as we're reporting back, and maybe City Manager, this is for you, but as we're reporting back, that we can talk specifically about affordability in each of the recommendations or each of the changes, because this work started when only three of us around this table were in the roles that we're in, and, or actually, you weren't in even the role you were in.
I was in another one, but I was at all those meetings.
But, you know, three out of all of us sitting here, you know, that scares me, but that's, you know, the nature of term limits. But I want to make sure that the concerns, this all started with conversations about affordability, and making sure that all residents can remain here as, as citizens and residents of Grand Rapids. And so, I don't want to lose sight of that. So as we're reporting back, it would be great to kind of have a component that, that explicitly states the, the affordable side of this and, and how we've been able to accomplish so many things. And that may not be something right away, but as we're reporting back later to look at progress.
Yeah, excellent point. City Manager, you want to speak to that?
Excellent point. And this afternoon, during our planning discussion, we, we will talk about what those metrics and determinants are around affordability. We've been looking at them very directly at the rate of the housing or the, the cost of the housing, but we'll also talk about on the supply side, how that may also contribute to affordability this afternoon.
Thank you.
Mayor, and I might say that in our Great Housing Strategies document, in the follow-up that you did, you had graphics that showed us how some of these zoning changes will provide affordability, others, so there's quite a variety. It'll be interesting to match that up as we go forward and see how close that was to your predictions.
Yeah, I, we haven't done it yet. I would like to do it though, because I think that, although I, I hesitate in some ways, because the, the question that Commissioner Moody raised before about is it, who's it affordable for in the neighborhoods, you combine that with all sorts of other pressures that are going on, and we have to maintain that kind of bigger view. But I think having kind of all those layers and understanding as we move forward, and we've certainly learned so much during this process. The Housing Compendium certainly provided that basis, I think, of understanding, I think, how we start to layer. think, how we start to layer data, and I know the manager's very focused in on that, as the mayor is, you know, how we really capture the depth of this issue. The amount of time you've spent as a body on housing is significant, and it speaks to the complexity of it. And I think how we construct the data that we collect and the story that it tells will be very important moving forward.
Thanks, great, thank you, well said. Commissioners, any other comments before I call a question? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, nice work, thank you.
Thank you.
So commissioners, just a couple reminders, we have a full day. We'll have lunch scheduled at noon right here in 9:01, and then we're back in here, correct City Manager, we're in here in the chambers, at 1:30 until 5:00, working on the strategic planning process that's gonna be managed and led by our city manager. So, anything to add before I adjourn? All right, with that, we're adjourned, and I will see you back here shortly.